Thank you and good evening. I believe Deb Ward is here and would like to make some presentations. The floor is yours.
Thank you Mayor Miller and the members of City Council. My name is Deb Ward. I'm the current Chair of the Fine Arts Commission and tonight we are giving our Fine Arts Commission awards, which we do on an annual basis. But before I do that, I would just like to take a minute and announce the names of the people who are currently serving on the Fine Arts Commission and recognize them for all of the work that they do on the Commission. Part of that work is being to go through all of the nominees and decide who the recipients for these awards will be. So, the current members of the Fine Arts Commission are Greg Niedhart, Patrick Grace, Lyons Smith, Cheryl Miller, Ann Plummer, Jim Trauton, and John Swanson. And I would just like to make a shameless plug that we currently do have an opening on the Fine Arts Commission. And if you know of anyone who might be interested in serving, you can get an application in the City Clerk's office. Excuse me. Our first recipient tonight is Sam Brown. Sam Brown came to Winona in August of 2009 as an AmeriCorps volunteer who only knew one person in town. In February 2010, he developed an idea for a music festival that would help to unite Winona's diverse music scene. When he first created Midwest Music Fest, he did not know that Winona was already establishing itself as a destination for festivals with its Shakespeare, Beethoven, Frozen River, and Boats and Bluegrass festivals. When Midwest Music Fest was in its fledgling idea phase, it was the Winona Fine Arts Commission who stepped up and awarded the festival its first $2,000 in a grant. This gesture immensely helped legitimize Sam's efforts in organizing the initial festival. In the past three years, the Midwest Music Fest has grown from just over 1,000 participants to more than 3,000 in 2012. It has hosted close to 350 musical groups and has happened with the help of more than 500 volunteers from Winona and beyond.
Maybe Sam would like to say a few words, maybe?
Okay. Mayor and City Council and Winona Fine Arts Commission, I am very honored to receive this award and I'm very happy here in Winona, living here. It's just been a really fun, I don't know, fun time. I didn't prepare anything, I'm sorry. But we're very excited for year four of Midwest Music Fest and you can expect it to continue to grow and continue to build community through music in Winona. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
I like your tee-shirt, by the way.
Christopher Livingston has been the owner of The Bookshelf since 2002. First at its location on Huff Street and since 2008 in the space shared with the Blue Heron Coffee House on Second Street. During The Bookshelf's 10-year history, it has brought to town over 50 authors each year for readings, workshops, and book signings. In cooperation with the Blue Heron, they have grown their Dinner with the Author series to more than two dozen events in 2012 where attendees are able to combine fresh, multi-course gourmet meals with compelling conversations with authors and community members. In addition, this year, The Bookshelf is acting as host for the monthly Winona Poet Laureate Reading Series sponsored by the Fine Arts Commission. The Bookshelf is frequently featured in local, regional, and national news on books and book selling, including several episodes with Kathy Werzer on Minnesota Public Radio and Susan Stamberg on National Public Radio. The Bookshelf has self-published the Winona, Minnesota on the Mississippi Book of Photographs of Winona, now with 1,600 copies in print and a third printing planned. An advocate for reading and the book form, Christopher Livingston, is honored for what he has done for the literary life of Winona and his betterment of our lives through his hard work as a small business owner and ambassador for Winona and supporter of all things bound.
I just wanted to say thank you very much to the Fine Arts Commission. And, you know, what we do at The Bookshelf really couldn't come to pass every year without the support of my staff who work tirelessly cajoling authors and publishers to send folks to Winona. It's not easy. And really for the community that supported our store kind of against all odds over the last 10 years. So, this goes out to them and to my family who, as any of you are small business owners, mayor, you are, you know that we can't do our work without a supporting family at home. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Winona Symphony Orchestra was founded in 1907 and presented its first concert in 1908, led by its music director, the eminent composer Carl Ruggles. Later in his career, Ruggles was associated with the group of modernist American composers known as the American Five, which included Charles Ives and Henry Cowell. Throughout its rich history, the Winona Symphony Orchestra has also championed contemporary composers by presenting premieres of orchestral compositions. The Winona Symphony Orchestra disbanded during the Great Depression but was revived in 1965 by a committed group of local citizens and has performed every season since then. Most of its concerts are presented in the Performing Arts Center on the campus of Winona State University. Today, under the direction of Dr. Donald Lovejoy, the orchestra has grown into a vibrant regional ensemble of nearly 70 musicians from the community and surrounding area.
On behalf of the Board for the Winona Symphony and the musicians who are in the orchestra who give their time, thank you all very much. This has been an absolute privilege for me to direct this orchestra. It's just a lot of fun every time, the work beside, but it really is a lot of fun making music in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. On behalf of the council, we want to congratulate all the recipients. And Deb, we want to thank you and the Fine Arts Committee for everything you all do and please pass that on to your committee. Okay? Thank you very much. We're honored tonight to have Tim Penny with us, former Congressman. Tim Penny is the President and CEO of the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation.
Thank you Mayor. If you don't mind, I'll quickly hand out these shareholders and I'll do it as fast as I can. I have a holdout for number 31.
Here, we can share here. There we go.
All right, thanks, Tim.
Does anybody here need one? All right, I'll give one back here. Thank you Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate this opportunity each year to come and give you an update on the work of the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. I feel especially honored tonight to be on your program, the same time as Sam Brown, who was one of our AmeriCorps workers here in the Winona area a few years back. And we encourage our AmeriCorps participants, after they've completed their work with early childhood, to also think about other ways that they can create a project or a program that might be meaningful to the community in which they live and serve. And he came up with this idea for a musical rock fest of some sort. And it just keeps growing and getting better. And with all the other artsy-related things that you have going for yourselves here in Winona, it's just one more weekend with something fun to do and it makes this community very special. So, I'm proud to be affiliated with Sam. With that, let me just give you a quick overview and I'm always happy to answer any questions you might have. As you know, the Southern Minnesota Foundation serves a 20-county region in south-central, southeastern Minnesota. We have been around for 25 years. We have an annual budget of between $4.5 and $5 million. That includes all of our resources, the value of our lending, because we do some business lending, as well as the value of our programming and our grant-making. We, in our current five-year plan, we are focusing on two key issues. One of those is entrepreneurship and that includes our lending capacity. Last year, we did about 22 small business loans and seven gap funding loans in partnership with a local bank or an EDA, all of that to help businesses grow and prosper here in southern Minnesota. We also do some grant-making in that area and we have been involved over time in some community planning programs where we provide facilitation to do a strategic plan around an economic development issue. For example, in Northfield, we did that a couple of years back. It led to the creation of an art walk to coincide with their farmer's market and that's been a very successful attraction for their town. We also did one in Rushford in the aftermath of their flooding and it helped Rushford and the neighboring communities, Rushford Village and Preston, come together around some economic development goals. And they just completed a survey of economic development needs in their community and the three towns are now planning to work together to achieve some of the goals of that new plan that they're developing. So, that gives you some sense of what we do in that regard, but also some grant-making to programs and activities that are helpful to local economic development entities. About 40% of our budget, we dedicate to early childhood, so that's the other big issue that we invest in. And we believe that to be a long-term, better and a quality workforce. And those resources are spread about in a variety of ways. One is through what we call our Early Childhood Initiative. That's where we go into a community, do a strategic plan about early childhood needs, bringing all the stakeholders together, and then we provide ongoing support to help them sort of work that plan. Winona was one of the early communities in our early childhood network. We now have 21 communities. We're adding St. Charles this year. And June Renneke, who is very active with us, as we came to town to do that early childhood programming, is now on our Board of Directors. She just came to our Board of Directors a few months back. So, she's bringing that expertise and a connection to Winona to our Board of Directors. We do some grant-making in that area and we have a multitude of distribution programs of books with Capstone Publishing, ABDO Publishing, and Pearson Publishing, also Young Explorer Computers with IBM, and then the AmeriCorps program where every year we select 24 AmeriCorps personnel and place them in early childhood sites. In this past year, we had four sites here in your county. So, that brings about $80,000 worth of staffing support to early childhood efforts in your county. When you add it all up, between the books, the IBM computers, the other grants that we have made in Winona in the last couple of years, I think we're just shy of a couple hundred thousand dollars. Last year alone was $125,000 or $130,000 worth of resources that we brought into the county through all of those programs and activities. There is a color-coded map on, I believe, the left side of the packet that I handed out to you, and that is a map that we update every year to give you at a glance a sense of the different resources that we've brought to your county in the past fiscal year. The color-coded squares are the early childhood resources. The color-coded stars are the grants or the loans that we've made in the entrepreneurial area. I will highlight just a couple. IBM computers, of course, came to the school district as well as St. Matthew Community Preschool. Our AmeriCorps program is evident in, and let me make sure I get these correct, Dakota, Riverway Learning Center, and Winona Head Start. We gave a grant this year to the Grace Place so they could do some outreach and expand the early childhood programming into Rushford. In the past, we've given grants to Project Find to help them provide job skills and entrepreneurial skills to the Hmong families here in your community. And we've given a couple of grants, a couple different times, to Winona County to help them with a greenhouse and a garden project and also provided a Vista person. We have five Vista slots that we spread around the 20-county region and we provided one to Winona County to help build out and make effective the Stone Point Gardens, which you probably are familiar with. So, those are just some of the things that we've been engaged in. And so with that, just again, an overview, a very quick overview of who we are and what we do. There's a fact sheet on our entrepreneurial work, on our early childhood work in your packet. There's a summary sheet of some of the more recent work we've performed here in Winona and Winona County. That's also in the packet and then, of course, that color-coded map is there. We raise about 8% of our budget from local donations, cities, counties, banks, individuals, corporations. 92% of our resources, either our lending dollars or our grant-making dollars, come to this region from other resources. And so as a region on the whole, that's about a $14 to $1 return on investment or ratio. And so we believe that we've been a good partner and that we leverage our resources effectively to bring benefits in both the entrepreneurial area and the early childhood area to this region. We are, in my view, a supplement and a complement to what others are doing within their communities on these issues. And so we just want you to keep in mind that we can be and would like to be a tool in your toolbox.
Questions? Comments? You all do a great job. I know that. I know that meeting we were at a month or two ago.
Yeah, at the Tow Center.
It was very, very enlightening as to what you all do.
Well, again, I appreciate the opportunity to give an update to you and the county and other local supporters every year so that we can reassure you that we have a presence here, that our resources are being brought here to the benefit of the community.
Okay. Anyone?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Okay. The only other thing I have saw today where the city, I think it's the city of Mankato, they have a half a percent sales tax and their staff is recommending that they extend that to the year 2030. Right now, I believe that sales tax is being used for their civic center and maybe one airport project. And what they want to do is not only extend it to 2030, but they want to expand what you could use it for. It's unfortunate that City of Winona had a half a percent sales tax, which we went to the voters with a few years ago and it got defeated, but if that would have passed, I believe Louisa Street would have been completed. We'd probably be working on solving the issue at Mankato Avenue. There would be funds available down the line for Levy Park, I know for the railroad deal down there. So, maybe as we move into the future, this is something that maybe the city might want to take another look at. Like even now, we have projects, the ICE Arena, that's something that could be, you know, used for that. We could have done Levy or we could have done the Bike Path with money from there. So, you know, I think, like I said, I think that's something that the city should explore in the future. Judy, you got anything?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay. Call and roll, please.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Councilman Thurlay.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander, here. Borzakowski.
Here.
White.
Here.
Under the petitions requesting communications, item 3.1, is a Goodview Activity Group request to conduct charitable gambling at the Wild Boar Bar and Grill at 129 West Third Street. Who to approve the request?
Okay. Moved by Michelle. Is there a second?
Second.
By George or Jerry? George, questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request by the Goodview Activity Group? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 3.2 is a request to eliminate the two-hour parking on Main Street, eliminate the 15-minute parking on Wabashaw Street, and also to remove the prohibition for operation of vehicles on Center Street during school hours.
Move to introduce the attached organs.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Jerry, second by Michelle. Questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to request to eliminate two parking areas and the 15-minute parking on Wabashaw Street? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 3.3 is a request from Peter Sardegna to waive the utility penalty. This is from the assessment hearing held two weeks ago. I've provided for you a summary on the back page of that agenda item showing the addresses that had delinquent water bills, what the amount was, and what the 15% penalty equaled. That penalty was added on September 24 and the total is $175.78. I've also provided you a copy of one of the mailed public hearing notices as well as printouts from the utility billing system showing the detail on each of those accounts.
I'll move to approve the request.
I'll second it. Moved by Michelle, second by Al. Questions or comments? Okay. The motion, all in favor of the motion, which is to honor the request of Peter S. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 3.4 is a request by the Women's Resource Center for display at City Hall. This is for the Clothesline Project, which is due for the National Domestic Violence Month. Would note that we currently do not have other displays in City Hall other than the two bulletin boards that people can place public notices on.
Judy, is there any comments or ideas from staff on that?
I think staff's recommendation, Your Honor, would be that we continue the current operation and policy of allowing the bulletin boards to be used for notices and not the rest of the hallway system.
Okay. Any other comments or anything? Okay, we'll move on.
Item 3.5 is a request for the temporary on-sale 3-2 malt liquor license for St. Mary's Church on Saturday, October 13. Who to approve the request?
All seconded. Moved by Michelle, second by Al. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request by St. Mary's Church? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 3.6 is an appointment to the Winona Housing and Redevelopment Authority of Rachel J. Smith. This is to fill the unexpired term of Laura Montgomery, who has resigned. The appointment would be effective October 2, 2012, through October 4 of 2013.
I'll move to...
George?
I would move to approve the appointment.
I second.
Second by Michelle, moved by George, and there's still one more opening on there that we're looking for somebody to fill. So, all in favor of the motion, which is to approve the appointment to the Winona HRE? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the orderly annexation request by the Gibsons.
I would move to approve the orderly annexation request.
Second.
Moved by George, second by Debbie. Questions or comments? Is that the new house going up on... Okay. Questions or comments? None? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, which is to approve the orderly annexation request by Robert Drew Gibson? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.2 is a consultant for the historic nomination forms. The Heritage Commission is recommending Greg Gout. I'll move to approve the recommendation of Greg Gout as the consultant.
Okay. Moved by Debbie. Is there a second? By Michelle. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the consultant for historic nomination forms as Mr. Gout? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.3 is the 2012-2013 Police Sergeants LELS Local 261 Contract.
I'll move to...
Moved by Michelle.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry. Questions or comments? It follows along the lines of everybody else.
Yes, and this is the last contract.
And that's the last contract. I want to compliment the unions and I compliment our staff and everybody involved. It seemed like this was a pretty good process this year. All in favor of that motion, which is to approve the 2012-13 Police Sergeants LELS Local 261 Contract? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.4 is City Council salaries.
Move to introduce the attached organs.
Moved by Jerry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Debbie. Questions or comments? George?
I will be voting against this tonight as I voted against it in the budget process, so...
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the City Council salaries? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed. So, it passes one to... Four to two. Right? All right. It passes.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Okay. Al, we'll start with you.
Other than a reminder that the Winona County Historical Society is sponsoring the annual cemetery walk, October 13 and 14 for the public, Voices of the Past Woodlawn Cemetery Walk should be rather interesting this year. They have a great theme and great stories to learn about.
I understand you might be in that deal.
If I can remember my lines, I will be, yes. On Saturday and Sunday, I can't make it on the school days, but it's an interesting process and there are a lot of volunteers. It's a lot of fun. There's a lot of energy and, you know, Michelle has been involved in it as well, councilperson Alexander, and it really should be a good time for everyone and I think people will come away learning that Winona is not always a bed of roses.
Anything else? Is that...
That's it.
Jerry? Nothing to say?
Michelle?
Reminder about the Polish Heritage Festival Day down at the Polish Heritage Museum. I think it's from noon to 4:00 on Sunday. Apparently, they have a lot of apples, good desserts. And again, I'm looking forward to the cemetery walk. Al's family story, who he's portraying his great-great-great-grandfather, fascinating, fascinating story. William Mitchell's involved. It's worth coming out to see.
Okay. Debbie?
Yeah, I was able to do the cemetery walk a couple of years ago and it was very hot that day, very, very hot. It's a wonderful experience. It's beautiful out there as well. Reminder to folks at the Winona Friendship Center is having their fifth annual an apple affair on Wednesday, October 17, from 3:30 to 6:30, and you can buy tickets at the Friendship Center. It's a wonderful event. They have a good meal that goes with that, a silent auction, and some entertainment. It's a lot of fun. They do a really, really nice job. And I also heard this morning, this is really important, that October is National Pizza Month. There you go.
Where's the pizzas?
I think every month is pizza month.
Exactly. October's National. There you go.
That it?
That's it, yes.
Okay, George?
Okay. We may have addressed this before in the past, but I spoke with one person from administration, one councilperson on this. I've had a call from a couple of neighbors that have nice homes and next to them appears to be a dilapidated piece of property. It's sealed up. It has a nice roof on it. The grass on occasions is cut. And their concern is, you know, they keep up nice properties and, you know, they have this dilapidated home next to theirs and, you know, there's no one living in it and the house needs a lot of work. And one lady apparently was trying to sell her home and, you know, she had some people come and look at it and, of course, as you look at the neighbor, you know, the house neighboring it, you know, they're offered $10,000 to $12,000 less. What I'm asking is if, you know, city administration can somehow look into this, if there's something that we can do with the home. There are some homes that, you know, they may take out building permits four years ago, five years ago, side three-quarters of the house, leave part of it left. If there's something we can do to somehow, you know, try to get a handle on it so that some of these projects, you know, could perhaps get, you know, completed. As far as, you know, the dilapidated housing, I would like to, you know, Michelle, with your real estate experience, if you could offer any, you know, not tonight, but if you could offer anything, you know, with the city administration, if there's somehow we could try to get something to make this a better situation, so...
Sure.
This coming Thursday, October 4, I will be hosting a town meeting at the Plaza Hotel. That's out on Highway, on Homer Road. This Thursday, October 4, 7:00 PM, at the Plaza Hotel. I'll be hosting a town meeting. And I would just like to simply send out congratulations to a longtime East End couple, George and Janis Tropal, who celebrated with their family and friends yesterday 60 years of longtime marriage. Congratulations to them and good health to them in the future and many more years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are seven items. Approval of minutes from September 17, the final adoption of an ordinance to amend the ordinance on nonconformities, an ordinance to install handicap parking on Winona Street, an ordinance to amend the... an ordinance to amend the alternate side parking ordinance, a claim against the city by Isaac Hancock, a claim against the city by Superior Companies, and a claim against the city by Jamie Rosenbusch.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, moved by Debbie, second by Michelle, questions? All in favor of the consent, which is the approval of minutes, three ordinances, and three claims? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Okay. Second by, moved by Jerry, second by Al, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry. Thank you.
Next to us.
Have a good evening.
You have fun.
Oh.
You can get out of here.
Yes. And we'll see you all off.